I'm also, you know, carrying around books and stuff, so it's fun, fun to kind of engage in most conversations with kids. And then the last thing, we just had our first rec night and just a huge shout out to our parent group volunteers for being there at Chaperones. We, we have more engagement in our parent group this year than, than in previous years. So that's been really nice to see.
All right. So at the high school, obviously it's been another great start to the year. I wanted to thank board members that are there for the stadium dedication. We're really proud of the way that that happened a couple of weeks ago. At the high school, we just completed our first chalk talk screening for a high school juniors. And so actually starting next week, those students identified for ACT support. So that's going to be starting next week already. October 12th, we are hosting the Red Hawk marching band invitation. We'll have eight bands, a little bit smaller this year, but we'll have eight bands, which is actually might be an okay thing. We have eight bands that are going to be coming for the Red Hawks marching invitation on October 12th. Later on in October, at the FFA national convention, Milton's contingent will be recognized. This is pretty cool. So they're recognized as a two star chapter. This is only the second time in a very illustrious, you know, experiences FFA and Milton, which is close to a hundred years. It's the second time that they've been recognized at this level. So they'll be actually recognized on the stage at the national convention and we're very, very proud of our advisors, Stacy Skimp, Paige Frye and Nat Lee. Work they do with those kids, an outstanding job, and they're going to get some special recognition at the national convention, which is, which is pretty cool. Another thing, you know, recently I've been, I wanted to give a shout out, I was thinking like Ben mentioned too, a shout out to all of our parents groups. I remember, you know, we're, Mr. Dom and I have been, and Mr. Steve, I've had a chance to talk to a lot of our booster groups with Referendum, getting information out. And it's, I'm reminded about how many different parent groups we actually have and the different ways that our community is supporting. So I might just acknowledge it. And as you may have heard, it's homecoming. So it's, it is crazy week. It's an awesome week. I wanted to, the student council is doing an outstanding job. You know, they are busting some traditions and, and really looking to do some neat things and for all great reasons. And we're really proud of the work they're doing. One other event that I like to highlight is Thursday night is the wall of honor ceremony. This is going to be the third annual wall of honor ceremony. That's at seven o'clock at the Proving Art Center. We are going to be honoring six people who either worked for, graduated from, or supported the Milton School District. And we are very excited about that evening. And then also just a reminder for the parade, the route has changed. The route is going to be on High Street. It's going to start at Schilberg Park. It's going to head east along High Street. It'll turn left down to Parkview and then just before East Elementary. So we have a slight change in working with Milton PD and trying something new this year, but just that'll start at two o'clock on Friday. And obviously the game that night and dance on Saturday and a nap on Sunday.
Questions from board members on any of the chairs that were highlighted from our conference?
I would just like to say good luck to all of you and have a fun week. I'm sure you can see the energy of all the kids in the area and just to hear other parents talk about what they're thinking during that day in all different schools. It's all worked for you guys to keep control of yourself and have fun. See you at the game on that.
Yeah. The next part of the superintendent's update then is the enrollment update. I think that you had heard of the previous meeting of this past Friday, September 19th, was the third Friday in September. So that's statewide, the third Friday count date. And while the, our enrollment, our membership won't be finalized until we get back to the state typically in a week or two, if you had heard that back. We're issuing numbers back to the board with the documents on that first meeting in October. I have just in general, a few things to report on that. And this is unofficial, obviously, but it looks like an increase in overall 4K through 12th grade enrollment from last year. It looks like we'll have our largest 4K class since we started 4K. As of today, it's 198 students. So it's great to see a 4K class that large. And it also looks like we'll continue our positive five year trend of increasing our net open enrollments versus open enroll allowance. So we'll be bringing all of those numbers officially to you at the next board meeting on October 14th. And the referendum communication update, we're continuing our meetings with parent groups, booster clubs and municipalities. Ross is at the City of Jamesville tonight, sharing information about the referendum at the City of Jamesville. We have a number of upcoming things. We're having an optional staff information session at each of our schools over the next few weeks. We'll be going to the after school for the staff members to come get our information all around that. This week is a little bit of a debate because of the homecoming activities. So we're with referendum information events that tomorrow we'll be in the House Board. On Thursday, the Milton Middle School Parent Group. And I didn't know it before, but I have a state superintendent's conference in Madison, the board office is always in Madison. On the end of this week, I'm going to be back in Florida between that and our different online activities. And then over the next couple of weeks, if we're down in the next board meeting, October 1st, we're sharing information with the softball boosters. On October 2nd, we have a community information session at Harvard Elementary School. And that's over to anyone in the public influence in the state. We have one here at Milton High School. We now have one down in Hattler. We have a lot of those that live down in that area. On October 7th, Monday of that following week, we're giving a point called the Viper of the Lord. And with the town of Jamesville. October 8th, with the consolidated parent group. And then October 9th, with the baseball boosters. And we have another community information session that we have in the Moon City Hall. So a lot of events coming up. The ones that we've had so far, we've got a really good plan. I think we run right into them. We continue to update our message based on questions that we've got and Carrie has done a pretty job on our website, update. And everything that I might notice will, we'll know coming out in the next week or so, within the next week. That is, this one is all through the numbers that everybody has.
Rich, I was going to say, I think that's a good idea because the absentee ballots arrived yesterday. So folks have now, some of them have it in their hand and have written for those abandoned conversations. So that's going to be super important to have in their hands with that ballot.
I would also say that strong flyers are going to go, because this is now that advertise the sessions and our signature language in the back are really nice and creative in the state. So kudos to Carrie and all the different programs there. They're doing nice.
And that is referring to the postcard sites, how that information will be found. It's really designed for people to know where the, the key messages and webinars are coming up. If you don't have the information or access to the website, and also the folks that Carrie did have, if they have conversations with neighbors or family, I would say that. And then the last thing that I had of the superintendent's update is that between now and the next board meeting, the school board appreciation move across the state of Wisconsin. Our group is on October 6th through 12th. And you know that school can be a very underappreciated role as a vibrant, vitally important role for our students and families and community. We have the top rated school district in Rock, home of the Massacre, that's in March, hard because we're there. Everyone wants to use that. I think our school board can do a supportive role in helping the families and students in the school district. So we will do some recognition activities and session to get close to things between that and citizens' forum.
All right. Questions for Rich? Anything from this report? All right. Thank you, Rich. Down in three is an HR committee report. The student manager is making a play up. We'll start with a benefit advisory group update.
You'd like me to do it or would you just?
I can get it.
Okay.
Okay. Take our pretty much that's the lead. We're trying to update the 2425 benefits advisor group update. We may not know the benefits advisor group, the advisor group, the design of the system, the health, the benefit. Best meet our employee needs within our available resources. May meetings are an opportunity for employees to learn more about what's at best share for. I, as HR chair, will be the board representative of the benefits advisor group. HR team has been recruiting may members for this upcoming school year, so we hope for them to turn off the upcoming meeting. Now Jaeger, the district's insurance broker, will be facilitating the upcoming meeting, which will be, our first meeting will be October 9th. At 4:15 here in the PDC. So if any staff are listening or are interested in coming, please address. Any questions on that? Okay. Next up is the 2425 student party comp day. The shared school committee is scheduled for Wednesday, October 2nd at 3:30 until 6:30 at the high school event commons. The school employee wellness committee, which will be administering group chats for any interested staff or on our district's health insurance. So thanks to the wellness and staff for giving that phone call. Where's that from? Any questions on that? And finally, we have the discussion and consultation on 2425 support staff and certified staff FTE. This is a follow-up to our HR committee and board conversation that we had back on July 22nd. The administration has provided updated staffing information for both certified and support staff out of the fall budget approval. The memo and board docs and table goes along with that outline our current FTE staffing models and compare them to the previous years. I'm not going to read all of them, but you will see the hedge for that number decreases or increases of both the certified and support staff. If any other needs require additional positions, grant square for policies 3111 and 4111 will guide any further arrangements. Of course, there's a new certified staff unnecessarily brought to the board for approval. And this is a item on the floor action. Are there any questions there? Of course, do you have anything to add to that?
No, nothing to add.
I'm willing to approve the staffing FTEs over the 2425. I agree.
So motion is from Jennifer and seconded by Tracy, did anybody?
Yes.
I'm sorry. To approve our staffing FTE totals for the 2425 school year, as you heard. Is anyone have questions?
Just one other thing that I'd like to share and point out, not just to the board, but to the audience too, is that over the three years, the four years that are listed here, we've reduced nearly 20 FTE across the different employee groups. And I think it's a good message for our community that we've worked hard to tighten our belts as, as funding for the state has been tight. But I think it's also put us in a place where if we need to make further cuts and we have to reduce staff in further, this can have a very significant impact on our student center program.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the staffing FTE totals for the 2425 school year as presented. If there aren't any other questions, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And those who are opposed, clearly passes.
Thank you.
Anything else HR wise? Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Kukunov. Thank you again. Move down to item number four on our agenda is the joint curriculum and technology committee report. And I don't see Julie, but I do see. I don't see Julie.
So I think.
Who's in shape?
So and I will.
I think Jerry is going to, we're going to do some.
I will add two questions that you got.
So let's see, Jerry, I think all three have a very similar theme as the board members are learning the year. Jerry and Gil put together a presentation of one highly prominent program, which is going to be, be an important thing to honor here. It's fresh and familiar this year. And the update was provided early in the process. They've been distributed. They're working teachers to get the money. They're working students to get the money with the new product. And so far, something good. Everything's going great. But at the time of that meeting was early. So it wasn't a whole camp. So far, I'm sorry, Jerry, am I missing anything?
No, just, that's exactly it. So we've, they've been handed out. We've talked a little bit about the training that the staff had. Talked a little bit about how we're going to be collecting feedback from students and from staff to make that decision. But again, we are early on in the pilot.
And I guess I don't want to undersell it. There should be 250-ish.
Yep, a little bit more.
Folks to freshmen is not a small task. So kudos to the.
Yeah. And that's Neil's team that, that really it's, we've gotten pretty good at it, Ed.
Yep. Versus the. It's a little small. It's a lot under the sun. So any questions in the board or against, in the second seat's response?
Just one thing that I would share and board members who may go over to this, but I want to make sure that everyone knows kind of what's coming next, how it will go on this fall. And the reason of the pilot news that are released with our current devices is out at the end of this year. So we'll bring a recommendation after the pilot through the tech and curriculum committees and then to the board on what we want to do moving forward after this year.
And one I had on, I think Kerry and Julie also shared that they did a loose meet with director.
Yes.
And then kind of evaluated the, I'm not sure where that comes next. I thought that they had that loose mission meeting of evaluating the product.
So as we take a look at making decisions, we'll be taking some of the feedback from that meeting as deciding where we go from the future.
I also have a question. The board, when this first came, because we gave a lot of questions that really led to see addressed in the pilot. And then will we get a mid-pilot update on some of those questions we provided? And maybe pop them with those.
So, you know, we are in the midst of gathering information. It'll be more information that we gather at, from staff along the way. I can talk with Julie about when we would share information that's gathered and how that might come forth here.
I think we can certainly revisit those questions soon. I don't think we're there.
Yep.
We kind of handled all this. And if you're about to tip, and so probably wait for the right time, I will guess.
Yeah. They weren't just mine. Everybody seemed like a lot of seconds.
It might be good for us to discover these those and you can't have some time, but be ready for those.
What is the timeline as far as when we have to make that ultimate decision, what direction to go?
So the timeline that we shared originally is that we will be gathering information from staff along the way, but there'd be a big review at the end of the first trimester. And we're going to give ourselves a few weeks at that point to actually through December to evaluate that, decide whether the information that we might need. But we would want to be able to have a decision early in the 25 on the direction that we're going to be going.
So what it sounds like is maybe we have another meeting between then and now with the group to take a look through. So we're not waiting to your final recommendations. And then the board has maybe different opinions. Is that now when I'm here, I'm going to like halfway?
I'd just like to have our questions addressed. I'm not talking more opinions or any chance for anyone to have those questions. They answer. And then after the first trimester, maybe that'd be a good time to.
And that's the end of, the end of November.
Sure.
Okay.
We can totally work together.
We can do that. We can do that.
Other questions?
All right. The other two, yeah, the other two items, again, we got a joint curriculum and technology committee meeting. I chair the curriculum committee. So Act 20 updates, I understand overview, Julie was unable to make it tonight, but she could share some notes with me. And Sarah from Cleveland, in fact, you have other questions that I can't answer. So staff has completed five of the 11 trainings. And that was done during the August professional development days. And the goal is by February of 2025, approximately 102 staff members, including 4K through three, teachers, fourth through sixth grade ELA teachers, special education teachers, multilingual teachers, school psychologists and instructional career professionals will all be certified. So again, that's a big number, 102. After completing the first five trainees, the staff has been engaged in intentional discussion about the current practices and how to continue collaborating, reflecting and improving our literacy and to support all of our scholars. And Julie really stressed how she was so grateful, as was the other staff folks about the trainings that have been scheduled during the professional development days. So they're not obviously again, taking time back on any other time. So allowing collaboration as a team. So any questions about the update? It is a virtual training, I guess they, but then they group it together. So.
Yeah, they're grouped by grade level. And there's one of our reading specialists, reading or reading interventionists, or one of the instructional coaches present with each group to help facilitate those discussions. The only thing I'd add to this is that the leaders are also having to do an Act 20 training. And so ours is a little bit different. It's led through CESA 6. And so those are full, six full day trainings where CESA 6 is meeting with the principals, the, the reading interventionists and our instructional coaches to do a leadership training on leading within Act 20. So yeah, everyone is working hard at this.
Any other questions? The reduction of the IRE classroom mathematics update. So teachers have received professional development again in August for this IRE professional learning specialist that they'll continue to receive on going PD throughout the school year, during the PD days. Administrators and teaching and learning coaches will also participate in professional development with the IRE specialist. They're focusing on key look force and how to best support teachers in plenty of math courses. And I feel like again, the discussion there was super positive so far. And I would say Julie couldn't talk enough about, again, just the support that they've been getting from IRE. Any questions on that?
All right. Thank you for that. And then five is new business and a couple, three, I guess, items to deal with. A, as Mr. Chance is making his way up to the podium, is an update on the high school baseball field, dugout replacement project. Stephen.
All right. Thank you very much, Joel. I'm updating the board here tonight on kind of phase two of the baseball, high school baseball field improvement projects. I was here on the August 12th meeting for board approval for our field lighting portion of the project. And at that time, the dugout project wasn't completely finished with design yet, but it was close. And we did send that project, I would forbid, the last part of August and received the bids in early September. And we ended up receiving two prices for that project. And the low bidder on that project was JP Cullen. And talking with JP Cullen, I'm sorry, the, the number that we received for that was just below $250,000, which is the board's threshold for approval of projects of that nature. And in working with JP Cullen with an initial pre-construction meeting with them, they are working on a mobilization plan. But it sounds like they're going to start the project sometime mid-October for estimated completion date, the first week of December. And we are also hopefully going to be working closely with Cullen to get some of the high school construction trades kids involved, to have a firsthand onsite project like that, that they can be a part of too. So we are very excited to move that project forward. And again, generous, made possible by the generous donation from Tom Campion and family. So any, any questions regarding the improvement projects there at the baseball field? And rendering is down below too. I didn't know if the board. And rendering is down below too. I didn't know if the board had seen the finished product yet, but they are very, very nice. Yes.
Steve, my other question is, is that dugout fence too tall?
So that dugout fence is, you know, I initially had the same thoughts there too. But we had, you know, Chris Agnew, part of all the design meetings here, and that is very specific to where he wanted. So for safety purposes, it should be fine. We moved the dugouts, like a full length of the dugout further down the line. So that, you know, where they currently sit is really close to home plate and more prone to foul balls. But this is, you know, right where they wanted them to be, so. Yep.
Any other questions for Stephen? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, B on new business is discussion and possible action as Mr. Billman is making his way up. On twenty-four, twenty-five high school extended field trip requests, where are the kids wanting to go, Mr. Billman?
There are a variety of places that they're going, as you see on the list there. We reached out to all advisors that would be going anywhere where it's going to be an overnight trip. You see the various locations there from Zero Democracy to Show Card, to FBLA, to potential state tournaments, show buyers, robotics club, et cetera. The one item that you will note that's not on here that is actually approved last spring is our history club trip. But these are the extended trips that I know of as now, though, like I think I see every year. The good way to find another one is for us to go to the board with approval and then we have another one to ask next week.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
The fourth one down is essentially Europe and the Holocaust. Where is that tabulation to?
That is actually, there is a, they'll be going into Germany and Poland. And I believe former Czech Republic, and I think there are three different nations they're going to on that trip. Yeah.
Jerry, the list looks a little bit shorter this year, is that?
Actually, it's a little longer. Yeah. Yeah, so we have many, most of the potential WIAA contests, if it's overnight, we try to get all those on there. But this time, sometimes those come in a second round.
I'll move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five high school extended field trip request as presented.
I'll second. Tracy's motion is seconded by John to approve our requests for extended field trips for high school students. Questions from anyone? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That clearly passes.
Thank you.
All right, and then C on new business is discussion and possible action on another field trip. This from our north side gets to do a forty-ninth annual meeting.
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer shared with me.
Forty-nine.
To McKenzie Environmental Center, the outdoor app is what we typically call it, so.
Yeah, it's not the Czech Republic, but it is heading north. So yes, there are four different rotations. So four separate trips, we're just looking for the board's approval for our sixth grade students is Joe mentioned, forty-nine. Forty-ninth year.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. Make a motion to approve the north side McKenzie Environmental Field Trip as presented. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve the north side field trip to McKenzie Environmental Center. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? That clearly passes. Thank you, Mrs. Kramer.
You're welcome.
Have fun. And that puts us way into miscellaneous. A is the staffing report. I move to approve the staffing report as I have.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve the staffing report. Questions from anyone? And those in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? That clearly passes. Gifts and donations, that list is also included and it has been amended for your, if you're interested.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations and gratitude. Second.
John's motion seconded by Rick to approve the gifts and donations to our district with our gratitude. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? That clearly passes. And last but not least, upcoming board and committee meetings. Mr. P.
There are two regularly scheduled board meetings in October, October fourteenth and twenty-eighth. Because the kind of is hard Mondays of the next week, you know, tributes from tonight. Those will start at six thirty PM time. I spoke earlier about the upcoming community information sessions. Those are on October second at Army Elementary and October ninth at the City Hall. Those will start at six thirty PM. And a benefits advisory group. And Rick is the board's rep with the benefits advisory group. And that is on October ninth, I have to check the start time on the map. Give me just a second.
I think it's four fifteen.
Four fifteen, I'm sorry. We don't have any, there are no committee meetings scheduled, we can now on the next quarter.
All right, questions on any of the dates? I have exhausted pageant. Move with your. Rick and Tracy, first and second, all in favor. Can you come? We're down.
I saw this racing in the. I was like, sure.
I'm bringing that.